Meeting to order. We are all present, so I don't need to make sure we have quorum. The first item of business, we do actually have a business item on our work session agenda today, will be the approval of a contract between Sioux Falls School District and Therapy Travelers for licensed speech therapy through teletherapy billed at $86 per hour with a maximum of $240,000. And obviously, this is a new issue with COVID-related expenses and so forth, and needs to be addressed before our next board meeting. So that's why it was put on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion. Second, any discussion? Saying none, all those in paper signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That contract approval passes. Move on to policy discussion. This arose out of the new boundaries that we're now addressing, open enrollment and other issues regarding enrollment in our buildings. And so our next step now is to address how we set capacities, how open enrollment will be handled, et cetera. So I'll hand it over to Dr. Stevenson.
Thank you. Yep. And being new to all of this, it's been a good opportunity for me to just learn more how the policy operates. It's always interesting from state to state, what's combined in some places, what's separated. And so everybody's policies and state laws are a little different. So as we look at this today, I think it's important to think about what's the outcome? What are we really looking for? And what actually needs to be changed in the policy language? We talked about things that have been in practice, things that are actually part of the policy, things that are actually part of state law. And so where do we have the ability to change some of the language that's in there? And really thinking back to what kind of the big pieces are. One, of course, is controlling growth and where we want students to land now that we have boundaries reset so that we're populating those new schools that are being built and that people are attending their area schools. The other component of this that's played into it is specialized schools or programs and how those have traditionally been viewed in terms of the flow of feeder patterns. And then what that's done intentionally and intentionally, but kind of some results in how kids travel then through our system. And so I think we need to balance those things of wanting to make sure we get populations of kids in the right places, that we maximize our facilities, and that we also do some things that contribute to making sure we have equitable experiences and that we really make sure we're looking across all of our schools to provide the services that we want to have available. So those are kind of all of the factors that we talked about just in preparation for what Brett will go over with some potential areas within the policy that we might think about revising. But I think those are the big things that we all want to keep in mind as we look at what do we actually change in language. So with that, I will move it over to Brett. She first. Okay.
Hi. Thanks for having me. So I'll kind of take us back a little bit and talk a little bit about what the process is going to be like. So you've made some decisions on the boundaries that have some impacts on the open enrollment policy. And then just from a practical standpoint, now we have more buildings or will have more buildings come next school year. So that necessitates some changes to the capacity levels for the building. So I think that's the first issue that we want to address and kind of get your input on that and so that we can take that back to policy review. And so to step back, that's the process we're going to follow. We're here to get input from you, you know, suggestions, bring people together to talk about issues we need to address. And then from policy review, we would bring a first reading to the board in October. Then there will be some time for review of that, to give it out to the public and receive some comments on it, and then a second reading, you know, after that timeframe. So that's just kind of, you know, it's a long process, but we thought it best to get some input upfront here. So like I said, the first main issue is the capacity. Another issue, as you talked about a bit through the boundaries, is about the assignment of students, either through these specialized programs or as we discussed as a part of open enrollment. When a student enrolls into the district, they don't have to apply each year for a new open enrollment. So we need to have a place for them to go when they matriculate out of elementary school and middle school and onto the next level. So in the past, that is, those have been assigned. Those assignments, you know, are calculated in the capacity prior to a determination of open enrollment. And so that's how these things tie together. So we want to talk through that and how you see that with the specialized schools and share kind of some of our, and maybe some other people in this room, their expertise with that and how it's operated over the years. Another, and then obviously any other issue that you have with the policy, you know, you would bring up as well, and we'll talk through that. Another particular issue we're looking at with open enrollment is a sibling preference for out-of-district. Typically, if there were two siblings, we would either take both or neither. For in-district applicants and students, sometimes the students would be split up. And so we were looking at, you know, where possible, we try to apply the exact same standards for out-of-district open enrollment as within-district open enrollment. So that would be another change we would look at recommending for you. And so I guess at this point, I'd kind of kick it back to you and see, you know, what are the issues you want to discuss? And then, you know, we'll bring in people to discuss those with expertise as needed.
When will be a good time? I'm not thinking today, but like just for capacity, just addressing that one first. Will we know best guess numbers for enrollments? And then to allow us to set educated guess capacities for the middle and high school buildings.
All right. So the capacities are going to be set at multiple levels. You know, under the state law, you can look at capacity for the building size, the class or grade size, and then also at program level. So we're looking here at the building and class where we'd want to do that. And I think this kind of goes way back to, you know, the facility plan and when the two buildings were moved forward is that we thought of certain numbers that we could, would be appropriate for that. So our recommendation for that would be to, rather than set the specific number in policy, would be similar to what is done at some of the other levels is look at setting it at 90% of that actual building or classroom capacity. And so that might be a little bit different by building. I think at the high school level, there's, you know, two extra classrooms currently at Roosevelt than there are at Lincoln. And so that would slightly change the amount, but that would be what we look at.
And so that the 100% number that we would use to get to that 90% number would be those same numbers we saw in boundaries, what those were, or is that going to be a different number as well?
Are you looking at the actual enrollments or the capacity levels?
So the 90% of capacity, what is capacity? I guess that's the question. Are those going to change or those going to stay? Because I know we had those, you know, for Roosevelt, for example, we were, 100% capacity is really 110%, you know, because of the number of students we had last year, for example. I know this year will be different with virtual and so forth, but when will that number be known? I'm just trying to be transparent with the public too and our families so that they can have a guess of, is it going to be worth the effort to go through open enrollment? Do they need to look at, you know, do I want to do other, those type of things? Or do I need to be accepting and knowing I'm going to just go to my school, which that would be the best case scenario, obviously. But just so we can give the public an idea, you know, that building is a thousand, they're only accepting a thousand, my odds of getting in are zero. So that they can have that kind of educated guess.
The number you're probably referencing will be dictated by the number of rooms available within that school and then 90% capacity because in the high school setting, where they're fairly efficient, they will not be able to utilize every room every period just through the transition and depending on what the room is set up for, whether it's a science room, whether it's for other specific content areas. And so 90% of that, and we went through the rooms from Jeff Kreider, and then looking at the percent of that, came up with the number of what each would be able to be at. So it'll be a percent. So I mean, if there's additions added on to schools, that could change that. So it would not be set at a number per se of 1,900.
Right.
But the way the percents come out, it'll come somewhat close to that. So there's two different numbers that you referenced. One, what is the projected number of kids that are in there? That number was utilized through the boundaries and gone through. And we see what those numbers were projected at. That information, you know, is out there public, but that is from the two years. And then there's going to be the numbers that we set that we know schools will go beyond that. Because even Roosevelt High School set at 2,100, well, we know there's 2,400, not full-time, but 2,400 bodies that could come in and out. Well, with the numbers that we set now, some of those schools will be above that now. And Roosevelt could still be closed to open enrollment to start with. We want to make sure that through the policy that we look at what's the space available for a comfortable-sized high school and at 90% of the capacity of the rooms.
I guess, yes, in a way it does, but I guess the $1,000 question is, when do we think we'll know those numbers?
The true number of that, because the seniors will be allowed, so we have to be able to ask them in the month of November, who will stay and who does not? That impacts overall numbers. And you'll hear as Brett goes through, we're trying to still account for that with freshmen to make sure we always have enough freshmen to have an even class size going through. So part of that will be dictated by how many decide to stay through that senior option that was given or discussed by the board. And then depending on what we do with the number of students that come out of the middle school. So we can't predict that until we know what those guidelines are going to be and then how many will choose to take that option. So it is still an undecided number, but tentatively, we have tentative numbers. It would be, it's probably still going to be that same situation where tentatively a Roosevelt would be closed, a Lincoln would be open to some degree, a Washington would be open to some degree, and a Jefferson would be open.
Thank you. And that's just so people will know basically before December 1st, you know, where they either stay in line all night or hopefully are online applying, that we have that information available to them.
We would have a good number back by December 1st, knowing from those that opted to stay and go as to what that would do to that senior class. And that would help us to give an overall number.
The 90% capacity though, we're just looking at the building as a whole. We're not looking at the students, right? So we should be able to say the 90% capacity for Roosevelt is X because right now we know how many classrooms there are and how many whatever. So I think that Cynthia's question is, what is that? Like, what is that 90% capacity?
Right. And there's, exactly right. There's two numbers. One is the actual building and then one is enrollment. And so we subtract one and that's how many spots for open enrollment you have. But the 90%, like for instance, at Roosevelt is with 96 rooms, 1,947.
10 of those rooms are.
Ten of those rooms are specialized, they're, you know, they're rise classrooms and things like that. So, that can fluctuate a little from year to year, depending on what specialized programs move in and out.
And again, that's how this all ties together with the specialized programs and capacities, because that's, that's how they're calculated. And so, the calculation for Washington and Lincoln, one less room at Washington and two less at Lincoln. So, it's nineteen twenty-four and nineteen oh-one.
Are you factoring in any kind of student teacher ratio with classrooms?
Yeah, we're factoring in the funded amount, which is at a twenty-five point one-five at, at high school. So, you take the number of rooms times ninety percent times twenty-five point one-five and that's your capacity.
And then, is that a different ratio at middle school and elementary?
Yeah, middle school is a twenty-four point four-two.
Twenty, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what middle.
Twenty-four point four-two and elementary, I don't have it written down, I think it's twenty-four point three.
I'm sorry, what was?
Twenty-four point three, that's what we fund them at, so that's what we use in these calculations.
So, and I think one of the things that we had talked about at the policy meeting was, right now, if you look on page four of ten in the policy, we have it broken out by high school and individual, which we'll need to look at. Obviously, New Tech won't be on there, because they'll be part of Jefferson. And then, I think Kate and I agreed that instead of just saying middle school eleven hundred per building, that we would like it broken out by building for middle schools too, because we have very differing populations or building sizes between Edison and Patrick and then, the other that have kind of the same footprint. So, I'd like to see what that looks like as far as a capacity perspective for the middle.
Similar to what we do at the high school.
Correct, yeah. I don't think we need to do that for every elementary school, I don't know. But I think for sure for middle and high school, it would be nice to have a building number that people could reference, just so that they would know what is the capacity of that, given that the buildings are not the same sizes.
I think.
Sure. And then, deciding if you have three teams or four teams or whatever per grade.
So, if you compare those numbers for the high school versus the middle school and elementary school, you'll see the elementary school is more calculated based off of that budgeted ratio. And I think that would be our suggestion also for the high school is to, is to tie it to that budgeted ratio. Because like I, like you talked about, you know, there are specialized rooms and programs that can alter that. So, if we were to put in the number into the policy, any fluctuation in those specialized programs or rooms would necessitate a change to the policy each time, if we have a specific number in there. I mean, you'll see at the end that the policy gets amended quite frequently. But I think if you do have that specific number in there, even more, more frequently.
I, I like the idea of using a percentage, because it does give that flexibility. But as long as we have somewhere maybe that we're posting so people can know what that year it's set at, so they can go and reference that easily.
Or we at least have some disclaimer language. I mean, one of the things we talked about in policy was just, you know, making sure that we give the buildings what they need to turn students away if they have to. And also, and so forth. But also have that flexibility where we're not updating this every single year. So, I think that's important.
Yeah, and I think there's a mechanism where we can do that or you can instruct the administration to do that. And if you even want to do it in the policy, we can add that as a portion of the policy that the administration will publish those numbers by a certain date each year, perhaps.
I think that's a good idea, just kind of, I think you like when you have a corporate entity and they're having to do their stock every year and update it. It's not within the stock, but they just put it in there as a memo, that, that, that would be something that we could do.
I think it's a good opportunity to do that. We're obviously making some changes to the open enrollment policy, trying to move online. So, now's a great time to do that.
I think staying consistent with what the student-to-teacher ratio is and how that impacts graduation rates, student and teacher success, test rates or test scores. And just how that really impacts the overall strategic plan for the district. Student-to-teacher ratio is critically important. And then, that factors in overall what the building enrollment is like.
So, to address maybe one wrinkle in the capacity for high school, for instance. So, obviously, with the new building, there will be, the capacity numbers will come down. But at the same time, you also have students that are already assigned to buildings or already open enrolled in those buildings. So, you can expect that the sophomore, junior, senior classes of those buildings might be a little bigger. So, it's going to take some time for these numbers to reach what the capacities are. And one issue that could, that could present itself as a result of that is you could be overcapacity at the building. And that would necessarily close the freshman class to open enrollment. So, what you could see is a very small class at one of the high schools, you know, follow through each year. So, what we'd suggest for that, or what I would suggest, is that you set a minimum for that freshman class. So, for instance, even though that building may be overbuilding capacity, you still, you allow that minimum freshman class to trump the building capacity. So that you don't have one high school with a very small freshman class that follows through.
And I would just add to that just a little bit, Tony, when you're thinking about building capacities for multiple reasons. And you can have a capacity set that's way under what a physical capacity is set, based on your ability to staff as it's opening up. Or based on your ability to run X number of sections, based on what you think your, your enrollment is going to be projected to be. So, then, you have to set that capacity at what you think you can operate at, particularly if you're opening. So, I think we just have to be cautious too, that we're looking at situationally, what we need to do capacity for a given outcome as you're making transitional decisions. Because right now, they're not going to all be static. They're going to all be in flux now as we add new tools into the mix. And so, it's just important to think about those layers of how you kind of shift resources over to new facilities as they open.
And when we get to the programmatic open enrollment, that might help answer some of those questions. But I'm just thinking, I think that is a good idea, obviously, because we do not want any one school to have a very seemingly small freshman class. But if we could put in there some type of percentage, guarantee that they're all within a certain percentage before that kicks in. Because I don't also want to see them say something happened and I'm just going to use an example. Say, Lincoln, all of a sudden, all of the honors or all the Spanish people left and there was this huge gaping hole at Lincoln and the upperclassmen. That we have then a freshman class, you know, all of a sudden, now there's a huge open enrollment ability at Lincoln, that it doesn't offset it. And I, I think these minimum numbers will, or max numbers do that, but maybe we want to put a minimum number in there too, I don't know.
And that, that's what it would be allowing for is that, because what it could do is artificially, if there's six hundred, which aren't the numbers, but six hundred seniors, six hundred juniors and six hundred sophomores, you've already eaten up eighteen hundred slots of the nineteen hundred and forty. Which means virtually open enrollment for the freshman class to be closed. So, the proposal on that, at least to start out with here, and then, things will balance out, is that regardless of how large the tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade classes are, we'll still allow open enrollment or enrollment up until four fifty. And then, that will kick into a building capacity. So, building capacity could close a school, but for the next couple of years, so that we don't just artificially reduce the number of freshmen, we'll allow it to go up regardless of the building size, which will become very critical for, for a school like Roosevelt. Who is going to have some larger tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade, it'll become critical for Lincoln. It, it probably will not impact a Washington one way or another or a Jefferson one way or another. But we want to make sure three years down the road, we don't, we don't have a junior and senior class that are two, three hundred students, because we put a plan in place that didn't allow kids to balance out. And so, that will do that by putting in, we will allow it up to this number, minimum of four hundred and fifty, regardless of what the overall number is at that building. And so, that'll help to account for that.
So, it sounds like we're all on the same page for capacity.
Anything else that came up at policy?
Regarding capacity?
Yeah, regarding capacity, I think.
I just feel strongly that we have that student-to-teacher ratio to drive impact at capacity. Something has to be a driver of that, because it's so, it's well documented in the research, the impact that that makes on the overall strategic plans for the district. It's the graduation, it's teacher success, student achievement, all those pieces. And I trust that we are.
Yeah, and the good thing with the high school on that.
We've got that piece in here now, yeah.
Yeah, and the good thing with the high school, regardless of this policy, their teacher allocation is based still on that twenty-five point whatever. So, even if, for example, Roosevelt right now is obviously well beyond a capacity number, but their teacher allocation is still based on twenty-five point whatever the ratio is. And so, they'll get that allocation of teachers regardless of the size. Now, the hard part, and that's where class size comes into play, because eventually, we allocate the FTE. Now, we want to make sure we maintain that ratio and that's why we have a class size in place as well. That's why there's three layers to a school capacity, class size capacity and then, program capacity. So, we maintain the ratios.
It's so important that we don't put those classes above what we have in the system.
I will say, though, that's something that happens as a school grows and you outpace the facility and then, you have to build a new facility. Those, even if you, even if you have them go above and you staff it, so there's extra support when there's no more room to go into, it still can be a ratio, but they may not be able to be separated into another room. So, that's more of a staffing practice than the physical capacity, but it has to be both. But then, you get nudged on and that's what tells you it's time to build a new school. Okay, next part.
Maybe we could go to the assignment of students and some of the specialized programs. I know this is an issue that came up during the boundary process as to, you know, which, which students as a part of this assignment process and would be granted. And, and the way the policy works is that you, if you're in a specialized program, you, you have an extra option to continue with that program to the next level. And so, what we would look at doing as a part of that, now, reference you to.
Page seven.
Pages seven, right? Okay, so, on the one, two, three there are kind of the three options for those that are in a specialized program. You know, every student has the option of attending their home attendance center or applying for open enrollment. That's always the case, so those are numbers two and three in that process. So, we're really just talking about number one here, where the district is assigning a school for fifth and eighth-grade students, so that they, as they move to middle or high school, they have that option to continue into that program. So, some discussions came up as a part of the boundary process. Well, for instance, at middle school honors, are you really continuing in that program as you go to high school? Because there's no designated honors program in high school. So, we would look as to, you know, for your input and, you know, as a part of this policy process, as to would we want to continue that going from eighth grade to high school? You know, it's, there's a difference between, for instance, the honors program and the Spanish immersion program, where that program continues on into high school. So, that's, that, that program continuing, whereas the honors program is just, you know, those, those students from that honors program could attend their home attendance center or apply for open enrollment, similar to any other student.
Yeah, I might have been the first one that brought it up, that I was very interested in that. And especially with the honors, because I feel like it was giving a false narrative to our other high schools, that, you know, maybe they didn't have the same programability that Lincoln does, and they do. And I think that has left a bad taste in the other high schools' mouth for several years, because of maybe the loss of students who normally would have maybe gone to their home attendance center and instead chose to go to Lincoln, for whatever reason. And so, I do think, my opinion, not the words, but my opinion would be to end that at eight. You know, we do have a program in middle school for honors, which now, after getting boundaries, will move to Patrick Henry. I think all three and then, fourth, now with Jefferson, of our high schools will have the same ability to instruct those honors students. I know there's arguments about using their cohorts or peers, which I, I, I am, I do get that. However, many of our students, both in elementary and middle school, are already split from their cohorts. My son went to Robert Frost, half their class went to Patrick, half went to Edison, they went to Patrick. And then, half went to Washington, half went to Lincoln. And guess what? They have friends a lot of places. I know that's not as easy for some, but it's a good way for people to learn how to adjust and adapt. And they'll make new friends and our school district will help them with those transitions as well. So, my opinion is, I think, for honors, that we look at ending that ability and that will also help with some of the home attendance issues.
One of the other things we discussed too, because I think, you know, we, we all pretty much agreed on that as we were moving to discuss the boundaries. But programs that I don't think we were as aware, aware of is also All City. All City also gets routed to like Edison and then Lincoln. So, I think the recommendation would be to end that as well. Because there is no middle school program and no high school program for that field either. So, I think we just need to be on the same page and be consistent with that policy.
So, All City ended fifth grade, obviously, so no cohort placement with sixth on. And then, honors, eighth grade, no, ninth grade. We discussed briefly Spanish immersion. I, my feeling I am that right now is that we as a district need to come up with a better plan as to what is, how the program's going to grow, where that's going to be.
Need a long-term plan.
Yeah, exactly. And that, that would be my only thing, is I think this, we hopefully will push towards that long-term plan to where the, you know, will this program go to two buildings in middle school to allow more students to? And then, hopefully, that program won't be taking over middle school, which can be doing at Edison because of the size and same with Lincoln. So, that would be my thing. I think, especially, I hope the program goes and there are more classes offered even at the high school level, that I, I see a value of doing that, unless we have the ability to do it at all the schools and do that. But I don't see it at that size yet. So, maybe that'd be something for me, I'd put a placeholder on, but I would like to see the district.
We have to, I mean, I really do. You, you look at those younger grades at Sonia and I mean, they're just, they're, they're going to overwhelm Edison if they all end up at Edison. They're going to overwhelm Lincoln if they all end up at Edison, so.
And then, you add the dual immersion students as well.
Right, exactly, dual immersion. We want to make sure that we have a seat at the table for those students and pursue, you know, those advanced classes in high school as well, or even middle school for that matter. So, I think we definitely have to look at a long-term plan for Spanish immersion and, and think about moving it into at least two different buildings. So, we can support those students and continue to give them this great opportunity. I think that's a, that's a separate discussion, both for strategic plan purposes and just for the program itself, because even just as we discussed it, it's, you know, how could it be redefined for an elementary experience? And then, an elementary experience, if you choose to extend into a middle experience and then, if you choose to extend into a high school experience? And where are those guaranteed opportunities? But how do we help people know, here's what you can expect at this point in a program, at this point, then at this point? Were there comments? We, we discussed this, we, we referred to it kind of as detracking a program at the end of the grade would be kind of our cutoff. But we had a couple of things we discussed. Tony or Todd, do you want to make any comments regarding some of the intended and unintended outcomes that may come as a result of doing that?
Yeah, I'm not, no judgments, I'm just talking about issues like ACE program, they really, ACE is an elementary program. We thought, well, you got twenty, you got one section coming out, coming out of school and if you spread them over at the time, five, and now it'd be six middle schools. You know, you could end up with one or two kids from a school that are ending up at another middle school. So, Edison at the time was picked because we looked at the map and most of the kids that were. So Edison at the time was picked because we looked at the map, and most of the kids that were in ACE, you know, the, not most, but the plurality of the kids were from the Edison area, and so it would be the least disruption, so we put them, we put them there. Now, you're in a middle school at that now, now you're in a middle school at Edison, you know, just with the general population. And maybe it isn't quite as big a deal, but you could still be spread out over four high schools if you stop it af- after middle school. Just something to keep in mind, it's, uh, like I said, no judge, it's just, just fact. The way the boundaries are now, if I'm wrong, Doug, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you're gonna have the, you're gonna have seventy-five to eventually a hundred, maybe a little over, of the Spanish immersion kids will split off, and, and you know, that's a pretty good chunk of kids to, to split off and, and, and go to Lincoln. But the rest of Edison will be heading over to, I mean, I think that, that's a normal thing where we would split it, maybe say, if you get a hundred, a group of a hundred kids going to a, a high school, that's certainly no, no big deal, not like isolating a handful and, and sending them there, so that isn't an issue. Am I missing anything else, Jamie?
And that was probably the heart of the discussion is, there's a group, that's a larger group of the honors and the, and that program's offered at all school. And if we end at, at the eighth grade, I, I think all of them in, in agreement of that, that I've heard anyway. The other issue that came in was All City, because then that means that would end at fifth grade. And that's a much smaller cohort of students that have not been with another group. And so it's just a consideration, it'll be fine either way, but it is a little bit of a unique group in trying to honor that program and keep it going. Would that be a deterrent or not? Now, if we still ended at eighth grade, at some point in time, they'd still be going back to where that homeschool may be. Currently, we've treated them as, once we've approved that into Edison, they're then treated as an open enrollment to Edison. And so they follow the feeder program. Depending on how we decide this, we would no longer give them, grant them an open enrollment into Edison. There'd probably be a superintendent's placement there if they chose to go there, and then that would end, that placement would end at eighth grade, end of eighth grade. So it could go either way, um, but all those then, from what I've heard, would end at the end of the eighth grade.
And my question would be, when, looking at this, when would, when are we able to sunset that, where we haven't made a promise to a student? You know, when is the right time to end this, if we end both of those, uh, continuation?
You mean, in terms of like a grandfathering of current enrollees? No, I think we'd have to look at that and see kind of what the longer-term trajectory might be for enrollment and play with that a little bit. But, um, you know, at some point, you have to kind of make a designated date, but I think we'd have to extend that for a few years, depending on the program and depending upon the timing that we're going to talk about now. If we can come up with whatever we use the red line, language to review the next time and make the recommendations.
Technically, have those students been promised anything in policy, or have they just, it's just been a practice that we've had, right? As far as like honors or, I suppose they would be.
Depends on how you interpret that policy.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's going to depend on the program. You know, for those, obviously for those programs that are continuing on, that's a promise that's been made.
And that's what I wanted you to check with, like, the honors program at middle school. What letter, when I'm the sixth grader, do I come in and get, and does it say, by the way, you get to go on to high school? Because if we've made that promise, we need to follow through on that, I think.
There's not a notification of promise there, that the letter is sent, um, in November or just before that into September, uh, or I'm sorry, into October, and gives them then the option to do that, but nothing has been sent to sub classes, uh, the fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade, sixth grade.
To be word of mouth, that they might know about it.
Yeah, but they would, by, through word of mouth, they would, yes.
But we have not given, given that, that statement.
But I mean, as we look at the, you know, the capacity numbers and open enrollment generally now is the time to, to make those decisions and lay out a path forward. And then, you know, that's why I'm looking, or we are looking at, uh, those freshman levels, right? Because if you get those freshman classes, you know, for high school between four fifty and five hundred, or, you know, even a little over that, you know, that follows through each year. And then four years from now, you have, you know, very balanced, um, classes throughout, and that really is, is the way we address, um, you know, going back to what was the purpose of, of the new buildings, um, reducing overcrowding and, and, and trying to create that equity between the, uh, high schools.
And that will also, part of that decision is much the same as the boundaries. You know, many people thought they were going to X school when they came through. Well, obviously with boundary change, that changed. And with the boundary change and policy changes, some of that will change as well through that. I think people, that voice was heard through the discussions, and some differed on that, but realized there was going to be some type of a change to that process. So I realize they may have thought this was the plan, but nobody knew at that point in time Jefferson was going to be built. Nobody knew at that time that Ben Reifos was going to be built. So those things all changed for multitude of kids.
Do we, given the success, um, and that it's part of our strategic plan, this idea of multiple pathways, specialty schools, um, do we have any feel for how, what the unintended consequences may be? Those students, when would they just go through elementary school and then they would not go to a particular middle school?
Right, and I think that's why we kind of brought up that issue with, with All City, is, you know, maybe it's appropriate, um, you know, at, you know, matriculate into high school. Maybe it makes sense at that time that, that that's done, and maybe, you know, from elementary to middle school, you know, maybe that's something we need to look at further.
On how's that impact A-plus for the arts?
Well, they're not.
They aren't special, yeah, they'd be open. And that's one of the arguments, to clarify, maybe for having it all in that middle school, is because then if you, if it's Jeff, I mean, if it's Edison or if it's Patrick Henry, there'll be a multitude of kids that will be going back to their home attendance center high school, if they will at least been in middle school together.
Oh, so did, in middle school would be an inspiration for?
Well, if that's what is decided, if it ended at eighth grade, for anything that was not a continual program, the only one that is not continual into the middle school would be All City Elementary.
And Eugene Field.
And which one?
Eugene Field.
Eugene Field is an open enrollment, so that is not, they open enroll to that school, so they would continue because that's open enrollment. So there's a feeder process that goes through Eugene.
But the program itself doesn't continue, like programmatically, there's no arts program at a middle school.
You are correct, but once, you are correct.
But if you open enroll, if you open enroll to Eugene Field, you can also go to.
You go wherever that feeder is, because.
Whittier.
Whittier.
Right.
And, and that's different than All City where they would go to.
It feeds, it feeds to Whittier. So even if you're open enrolled, if you're open enrolled at Eugene Field, but your middle school is Patrick, you're feeding into Whittier.
If you want.
Because of the open enrollment.
If you choose to, you can always go back to your homeschool.
Right.
And you, go ahead.
Just to kind of step back a little bit, just, you know, part of this process is kind of, you know, separating things again, the way they should be, that there's an open enrollment process and there's, you know, specialized program. There are, there is a list of the specialized programs, and, and it does, um, state that there's a, there's a different application process for those. Um, whereas you're A-plus, that is, that is just an open enrollment. And whenever you are open enrolled, you do always have that opportunity to return to your home attendance center.
That's what I said when I started this, we have a lot of things that have all been kind of wrapped up into this one policy. It's out to in, it's within and around, and it's specialized programs. So I just heard somebody who said it, um, if, if it would help for us to just do kind of a simple table of how the enrollment progression happens for kind of those different buckets, we can sure do that. But that's what makes it a bit confusing, I would say.
I think when I think about All City, um, I totally understand the, the small twenty-five kids. But I also think that as an elementary student, you are likely not going to school with your neighbors, right? Because you're, you've open enrolled and you're driving. And as an open enrolled person, my, with my kids, like, you are still very good friends with your neighbors, you just don't go to school with them. And so for me, I would prefer that it ended at elementary school, because friendships will form in middle school that I think are easier to make than they are when you are the new person in high school. And so at that point, you're now joining the middle school that your neighborhood is in, and you're with your class, your neighbors that you have been spending time with, playing in the backyard, riding your bike or whatever, and so it's natural for you to do that. Whereas if you now stay with that same four people and you go to Edison, or you go to whatever the middle school is, now you've got this middle school bond where you've been able to play school sports together, you've been in the band, you've been in whatever. And now it's like, oh, sorry, unless you open enroll and get in, you can't go with this group of people, kind of thing. So I guess when I think about it, that's, those are kind of the things I think about, and why, to me, it makes sense to, to end. Plus, when they get to middle school, a lot of those kids are all could be new to middle school too. And so, yes, there's going to be pockets of elementaries, but everyone's coming in together, new to a new building to find their way around all at the same time. And so they may know, have, have familiar faces from other activities that they've done in, from a social.
We had, we had neighbors that did just that, meaning of the ten kids that at one time were all elementary age, they were either at Spanish immersion, All City, or, um, or Longfellow. And they all came together, well, except for Sonia, or except for Spanish immersion, but all the other kids came and went to Patrick together. So they didn't, you know, they decided to go through their, their neighborhood school for a middle school. But, you know, and I'm sure that there, obviously there are lots of people that made that decision, but, um.
And enrollment, whenever you undo it, you have to look at, so then where does that flow now go instead of going this way? So that's one thing we, we would kind of look at is, if it's not at the end of eighth grade, if we say now it's at the end of fifth grade for a particular program, then it's, the, what does that do to where they've typically gone to that sixth grade enrollment? And then what does that do where they may go back to? So we'll look at that.
And it also impacts where people choose to buy real estate, neighborhoods, and it's, it's a larger decision for parents.
When I go back and forth with the, you know, the, the All City example or decision that we ultimately will have to make is, um, you know, it is, again, it's a small cohort. And some do choose to go forward or not, and I think, you know, man, your question about unintended consequences there, maybe we don't want to, um, I mean, we still want to, in, uh, support this program at All City, so if this is one little piece, I mean, and Todd, I don't know, maybe you can tell us from your experience, do you know that that cohort would then go to middle school together, or is that something you just kind of figured out towards the end?
Just knowing all over all of them.
Yeah.
And to be quite honest, it would have been better for my instinctive of art, for my girl to go to Edison because it didn't mean anything. And not all of their, All City's kids, they, they scattered. So somewhere the path, right? So if they ended up not knowing the neighbor kids, it would have been a city.
So it wasn't a known benefit of the program that you would end up being a cohort together at middle school? It wasn't, so if you're, if you're, when you chose All City as a program for your girls, it wasn't a known benefit that they would then have a, the cohort move to middle school together?
Right.
So it, it, it didn't sway your decision one way or the other?
Nope, and they ended up not all going to.
Right. It's a piece I'd like.
Most of the kids from their class, it was Patrick.
Yep. And a piece to that particular program, and it has had phenomenal success, but it is capped at one class. So there has been a waiting list, and that program has not been allowed to grow because we capped it at one, or at one classroom, given the size of the school. So just something to keep in consideration, if we look at their test scores that come out of that school and what their model looks like, um, it's quite phenomenal.
When my girl went there, it was a P T, it was only a hundred and fifty-two D points. My girl was born, my wife, me, and she go to the hop, go work for Appleton School to be alternative school. So unbelievable school.
And if we look at that recent test scores, for example, and how they were tested, my distrust of it, or even national for that matter.
And I don't know what that has to do with it, but it, it puts a bag in the top, but for my girlfriend, it ends up in it. It was a hard, we had a hard time getting them to fit in to Edison because everybody's stacked. No idea how that affects.
And they weren't going with the school with their neighbors?
Yeah.
So I think for policy purposes, my question for clarification would be, since it's a nominal number of students, do we want to stay with kind of that uniform eighth grade cutoff? Or do we want to consider it differently by program? What I think I'm hearing is consensus around eighth grade is the detracking point where the expectation would be that to go to a home high school.
Could we, um, kind of suspend that and get just a little, a visual on what it looks like and what that impact would be? I guess, I don't know that I'm comfortable right now saying this is the direction that I'd want it to go, just because I don't feel I have any kind of methods to look at or base it on.
No, let's take us a step back here too, no decisions are being made today. Like I said early on, you know, this will be a process where October, the, the first reading will come out. Um, and that'll give you some opportunity to hear from, um, the parents of these pro, uh, with children in these programs, um, and to hear what their thoughts are on it also.
I'd also go back to the policy committee next week, right? And I guess before we're impacting policy, from my standpoint, I'd like to see some kind of data surrounding that, as opposed to it just being some intuition or.
It'd be great, especially like even right now, is I just think, I, if we could see, like, currently, this many A students do use the Edison option or something like that to know, to, to know, um, because I just think, like, I know Christine Erickson's kids go back to Memorial, I believe, don't they? They don't lose it, you know, so it's just, something like that would be nice to know if, if, even if we do end it, is it really affecting even ten students? Or is it, or are twenty using it, who would not normally be in Edison students? Because that would affect, but I do, I like the idea of kind of one grade level, because it just makes it more, it'd be more uniform for you guys. But it would be nice to have some data atta- attached to it.
Well, I think what you're, you're talking about is the impact on enrollment, which is going to look different every year depending on where kids are coming from. What you're, what you were trying to, I think, solve by looking at this was, do we have the right mechanism in place to then be able to direct traffic again when kids are at a high school level, to be able to open and close enrollment the way we want to? And is that going from eighth to ninth, the level that we want to say we want to hit reset in order to be able to put it back into a process again that directs open enrollment? But I think this is less about impact right now on what enrollment looks like, and more about do you have the right mechanism in place to be able to control enrollment and steer kids back to a home high school, to then keep people in boundary areas, to then have equitable programs? So don't get too lost in your weeds about the current numbers, although they're relevant, because you're also trying to solve that problem. And if it's just a nominal number across, then are you solving one problem creating another one? Or are they, you know, is it kind of a walk no matter what? So we can, we can pull some of that.
I think for me, that's why intuitively it makes sense to say, when does the program end? And so that when you are describing to somebody your options, you can say, well, All City is K-five, so after fifth grade, you join everybody else. Honors program is through eighth grade, so after eighth grade, you join everybody, you know what I mean? So to me, that's the intuitiveness, I understand the eighth grade. But I think program-wise, I think it's easier to talk about why one continues and one doesn't, when you are talking about the education provided itself.
Yep, I think that's one of the benefits.
I mean, I think that is the main, um, issues I wanted to bring, um, regarding the policy. I know there may be others that you, um, want to bring, so if we want to discuss any of those, that would be a good time.
Is this the right time, or are we, is that the next section where we're going to talk about basically out of district versus in district and comparing siblings?
Oh, siblings, yeah, we can, we can discuss that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's on page six of the policy. If you look at number seven, that's, um, where it, six and seven differentiate between out of district and within district. So within district, if two or more students from the same family, um, request open enrollment, district may deny for one student and approve, um, for the other student in the same family. Now, there may be instances where a family chooses to, um, have, you know, one stay at their home attendance center and one open enroll, or two open enroll to different schools, um, but, I mean, I think that the, the thought behind the sibling preference for out of district, uh, students, um, and that's, that's something that's in state law.
That's, that's state law, correct.
For, for out of district, the thought there is that there's efficiencies, right? So if one family, if you're dropping off one family member, or one sibling is driving to school, um, that there's efficiencies by having the other student with them. So that's where that sibling preference comes from.
So we can't change that, right? That's state law, correct, number six, okay.
So the question then is, do we want to apply? So the question then is, do we wanna apply the same um, the same preference to within district? And the effect would be, um, you know, either both are open enrolled within the district to another school or or neither are.
Question, when does that kick in? So say I have a son who's gonna be a freshman, he applies and gets into Lincoln and from Harrisburg. And he's a current senior, I have an eighth grader who's gonna apply. Does that tie over to that eighth grader? Since he's at a building, that eighth grader doesn't get that out of state?
When they're, when they're both in the building at the same time.
Would have to be currently going, being in the building.
It's not a legacy um provision.
That's, that's how I figured, even if they're in the building when you apply, they still have to be in the building when you're going to attend.
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to make that clear.
And that goes back to the purpose of it, is that that efficiency for families.
I figured, I just said it, I wanted to be clear for people, so.
I trust with this one, cause it was exactly opposite for a building, so.
For in-state, for in-district versus out?
Versus out, yep.
I mean, I know we're tight, but I I kind of feel like if it's the efficiency, we should follow the state law. And the reason being is, we know if a family pushes it, we can rely on that this is what the state law is. Is that correct, or?
Well, I mean, it has, it has been that, you know, in-district uh is treated a little differently than out-of-district because the out-of-district sibling preference in state law is speaking to um, you know, just those coming from out of the district and their siblings. But like I said early on, we we are trying to treat in-district the same as out-of-district open enrollment applications. They're on the same form, um, and you know, for for all other purposes, we are treating them the same.
I guess. To the extent that we can have out-of-state and within district, the two near each other in terms of the same families, residing in the same household, applying for open enrollment, if it's granted that the entire family is able to come. It's just simplifies it for a family and it's consistent then out-of-district or within district.
You remind me what the example was, that was it Dan?
Yeah.
Had some example about a student who may apply out of school because it has specific services that are offered or something like that, and that if there's not room for the sibling, then that student who really needed or wanted to be in that location would also be denied because of the sibling? Is that, I don't wanna misspeak, but I feel like there was something.
There's still some different rules that would apply on the state level as well as we utilize at district level with special education services on I E P.
Okay.
And so that still maintains, and that would still be in use. The situation where this comes into play more often than not is they may have a a ninth grader and a junior that are applying to open enroll to a specific school. Uh, the school accepts the ninth grader, um, says we will accept the ninth grader and denies the junior, or vice versa. Well, then the family's stuck on that situation that one of them is gonna be approved to move in and the other one is not, so they have a split if they're gonna honor that and let the one go that was approved. And so it splits. They always have the option if they wish to only apply for one of them. But once one of them is in there, that family option, much like out-of-district, we have to allow allow any other sibling that applies open enrollment into our district, withstanding the I E P law.
Do you want to say?
Still allow a family flexibility if they choose to have one of their students not attend that school, they could attend their own, attend the school, or another open enrolled school.
Yes.
Correct.
And that's out-of-district and in. We have several families that have one or two of their family members open enrolled to the Sioux Falls School District from out-of-district. And they may have another family member attend Harrisburg or or Brandon or wherever.
They may have two at Roosevelt and one at Lincoln.
We have that currently as well, and they have that option. It's just that this would, if we're going to accept one, we have to accept both in-district. And so that it's not treated different than the outside.
So let me, let me give you just another view of this. So the out-of-district kids never had a spot to begin with, so we're letting them come in and have a spot. Kids who are already in district, already have a place at some school. And so one of the things that can happen, if you require that they both come, if if one gets in, both or more get in, you may have a family that's requesting fourth grade, and there's also a second grader and a first grader. And in fourth grade, there's room, so you can allow that fourth grader in. It's class of nineteen, that takes it to twenty. You have a first grader where you have classes of twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six. And now one of those is gonna move to twenty-six or twenty-seven, so we go back to class size. That's where it can either throw it into, we've gotta have another teacher, which adds an additional cost to the district, yet there was room for them possibly where they were in their home school. They don't lose a seat in the district, but it may end up costing the district more for teacher allocation or for other resources if that movement isn't regulated by something.
But the funding cost is student.
But they're already in our district.
But this, I thought we were talking about for an out-of-district.
I'm talking about for.
In-district, we're talking about the in-district ones now.
Right.
We can't touch out-of-district, we're only talking about in-district right now.
Okay.
And I, the discussion about the added cost was, eh, when you get to the point where the ratio is high and you have to hire another teacher for that class?
So maybe in their home school, let's just say they were in first grade at their home school, those class sizes might have been twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-one. When we allow them to open enroll into another district school, that throws maybe an already high classroom over to adding staff that we wouldn't otherwise need to add if we don't have an ability to say, yes, at fourth grade, we have room for you to scoot around to another school, but at second grade or first grade, we don't have room. So family has to make a choice to stay in your home school or let that fourth grader go if that means enough to them. But it can inadvertently cause us to spend more dollars for something that we already have resources to cover at their home school.
What um, do when somebody applies, that fourth grader applies? When they, maybe they applied when they were a third grader? Do they have to list other family members even if they're not applying in their ages on the application form?
If they're asking for all of those kids.
No, if they're only asking for one.
If they're just asking for one, no, they would not, same way out of district.
I'm wondering what information we get if say only one applies, that's.
Same way out of district, if they're just asking for one to apply at that point in time, they don't list all other family members.
So it's a guessing game for you guys when you're doing that?
It has been at times.
I mean, if they're in district, we already might have that data, cause you can go look, but if they're out of district, that's.
That is correct.
Yeah, right, we would have, given that we've been following this for some time, we would have some data that would suggest if that's what type of issue and what financial burden that that has been.
And it's a rarity, I mean, if it's changed and two applied to the same elementary and one of those classes was full, then both students would be denied. And then both have to go back to the home attendance center. Where right now, we've allowed it to be, one could be approved and the other not. If a kindergarten student was approved and they moved up in their second grade a couple of years later with that new kindergarten younger sibling that comes in would automatically be allowed in then. It would not be allowed to be denied if we're using that. Because once we approve them, so if we match that, it would have to follow just like we would with an out-of-district person that, once they have a younger sibling and become school age, they automatically get an open enrollment to our district.
Well, I think our practice, we would wanna say yes as much as we could if it was multiple siblings. But the question is, in policy, do we wanna maintain a mechanism that still allows us to control what those class sizes are in our school? Because once you make that an automatic, then you lose that mechanism.
I see the benefit of that.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I wish the state law mirrored what that is, but it's not the way it is. I mean, we're, we're all inclined to do what's good for families and what's good for efficiency and transportation and, you know, some of those things. But there are some instances where it may just be for one child that a family is looking for them to go to another school, we can allow that. They don't all have to go, we allow that. And so really what that does is pr�erves our ability to 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 monitor class sizes.
Okay. Any other discussion on siblings? Was there any discussion, I know I had brought to Dr. Staverman and to you, discussion about a staff policy possibly, um, was there any discussion back during the policies?
I think you said that you were familiar with a policy like that, correct?
Yeah, that was my norm, was that was just something if a teacher's at a school or a staff member, any staff member, and they wanted their child to attend that location, that was something that they could do. But that had been around for a long time, and so I haven't experienced it where that happens new. But like we talked a little bit about it today, you're never gonna get this mass rush because it still is an opening that's created at a school or, you know, people who are existing, these kids are already in school different places. So I think it's just something that where where I've had that as a reality is because size of district, pickup, drop-off, it's real practical reasons. It's never been used as a mechanism where, well, I want my child to get into this school, therefore, I'm gonna go try to teach there. I mean, maybe a few, but I had, I've never seen that as a, you know, a big huge benefit that received. It's just a courtesy for people who need to be somewhere by start time.
I, I love the idea of our staff, you know, except for specialty programs, obviously, we can't do it for them because those need to, we need to follow the guidelines we already have in place for the seating of the students in those programs. But um, it it it's something that, you know, with their, especially the elementary, the early hours in the high school, if if the school is in the vicinity of where they teach, how far up the chain, like if you're an elementary teacher, did that student get to go to that, so say, I'm gonna use Robert Frost again, since we're right by there. If I am a teacher at Robert Frost, could then, Robert Frost is gonna feed to Patrick and then Lincoln? Could that follow through, or is it only within that building of elementary?
That building, yep, then you still go by your home attendance boundaries.
After this building you're outside of, correct? Would it be possible to look at it extending through, just because it's, if it's truly for that teacher or staff person's ability to transport their child? Do you see what I'm saying? Because if I live over on the west side and I'm teach, but I'm a teacher at Robert Frost, you know, just getting them to that building and with working and so forth, would that work? Is that too much?
I don't know if we thought about it as a feeder pattern. Yeah, I mean, that can change.
If you're on the west side with you, then your child would maybe get on a bus for middle school.
But high school not?
Right, I, there was no um busing for regular ed in those places. And so most preferred home attendance area because you could walk, you could get there with a neighbor as opposed to what might happen if I'm not at work and then my child is across town where I work and now I'm home. And then you had some other logistical things. Again, they can follow open enrollment, so have the option to put them at that middle school and you could maybe build in some kind of a, you know, a a staff indicator on that if they're requesting to open enroll to the nearby middle school or high school. You know, we can think about that, and you can put whatever you want to in policy. I don't know if it's as relevant at middle and high school as it is at elementary. Those are also schools that have before and after childcare, so that a a staff member had a place for their child to be while they're still in working hours.
I think one of the other concerns with that too is for open enrolled students, their assigned school may change. If you're speaking of, you know, a kindergarten or a first grader, um, as you're making that decision, are you really aware of what that's gonna be for middle school and high school? You know, we do, because you're not required to open enroll each year when you're out of the district, you know, we do assign a school that you can go to, but it's not necessarily the same school that.
The students in that building.
A home attendance center uh student will go to.
Yeah, cause Robert Frost right now is George McGovern, isn't it? If you're open enrolled, example, yeah, yeah.
And right now, it has been in, in each of those students, it's been so few, but each of those have been able to open enroll to Patrick Henry is the few open enrollments that Patrick has has taken in. So there is still always the option of open enrollment to an additional school, or open enrollment to that school. And even in this process, it'd probably still have to follow the state provision of siblings' first preference. And so it'd have to come under that listing of preference then.
And then really, if you're a high school teacher, I mean, you really only can open enroll to the high school that you're teaching at.
Yeah, cause you're already in that building, yeah.
Right, so then if we're not talking about the benefit really maybe being for those elementary age kids, then does it make sense that, you know, they don't get to go back and say, well, these were the Peter's school, so this is where my kid is at?
I think it's situational with where that employee is located, and it's a benefit that's awarded to you while you're at that location. That's how I think it would be cleanest. I'm gonna think about that, I mean, that kind of kind of moving on around a little bit. Okay, any other points?
When do we think, so when in October will be the first reading and the the second reading in November? And then how about faded test online for open enrollment?
Well, we have to get this policy in September because the um, I mean, just the letters going out to the fifth and eighth graders usually happens at the end of October, so we have to backtrack from that.
Yeah, okay, I thought you said October, that's why I got.
Well, yeah, it can be at the end of this month, too.
We're trying to move this along.
That's a good point.
Okay. We have policy next, you know, the fourteenth, thirteenth?
Yes, it is this month, the first.
So that's when we'll hopefully then actually have a draft that will come there based on maybe what we've talked about. And then we will, from that, the policy committee will again kind of throw some ideas around, make any other addendums, and then that first draft will come.
Next board meeting.
September twenty-eighth then, next week?
Good, mhm. I think we were gonna try and for sure October at the latest.
Cause that would be thirty days, right, is the first reading thirty days?
Correct.
So it may be that end of September. Board meeting, they'll allow it to be in effect before we send letters and notices.
Yep, and policy review will be on the fifteenth, so we can.
And as far as I know, we're on track for the enrollment piece. And it's a separate topic now that I remember that it plays into this.
Or October twenty-sixth, then we could have the second reading, is that thirty? That might not be.
Is that what?
So if we did September twenty-eighth, if we did the first reading, we can't do the second reading for a full thirty days, so we wouldn't be able to do it at the October twenty-sixth reading, right? So that's not thirty days.
State law, everything?
It's only twenty-eight.
Kind of remember if we actually adhere to that strict thirty day or. Or if it's just two meetings or something? Right, okay. At the next policy?
Right. Perfect.
The first reading the twenty-eighth, second reading kind of hopefully tentatively planned on that twenty-sixth. They'll have a policy meeting in October during that time, too, so if we've gotten feedback from anybody.
Yep.
It says two meetings.
Two meetings, yeah.
Okay.
Yay, okay, we're good. And then December first is still the hard and fast date for open enrollment?
That's a hard fast date with the state on that. And so, yes, December first would be that date that we'd adhere to and and working with to make that a digital or online as well, um, as we're working through. We wanted to get past, started this first, the beginning of the year with the one-to-one and and a lot of the things being rolled out and then start to work on that application process to be online.
Okay. Anything else on policy? Also, do you wanna start with committee reports? Nothing, no commi- no committee, Kate?
Uh, policy, we discussed this. We meet again in a couple of weeks.
Um, the Educational Foundation met and the highlights from that, the state of the school event that was online grossed, uh, no, they brought in um thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. The cost was six hundred and um, or six thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars. Not only just the amount that they were able to fundraise, but that they were able to get something like six thousand views, which typically that event is, you know, a couple hundred people. So from that standpoint, and the money raised and all things considered, um, the R O I was such that it needed a successful event. It costs six thousand dollars to put on. It cost six thousand dollars to put on.
I'm just, it was virtual.
So, it was about thirty-three thousand.
I'm sure the company, Finical Productions and probably all that was probably.
Oh, yeah, the videos and stuff.
Yeah.
It was like. No, the videos were very nicely done.
It was nicely done.
Well, I think, and having Dr. Staven as kind of a featured speaker? And being new to the district, the timing of that was really nicely done, so thank you for your time.
Really draw a crowd, nice work.
Drawing a crowd, wow, she's on the road. Uh, for August, the fundraising total is at, right about sixty-eight thousand dollars. Forty-nine thousand of that is in cash, the other eighteen is in kind. Overall, the Education Foundation has met its fundraising goal at eighty-eight percent. Their fiscal calendar is the same as our calendar, so that gives you some idea of where they're at with their fundraising efforts.
About it? All right, I'm okay, we had policy. We talked for a long time about this policy.
Thanks for all your work on this, guys. It made, and, and for everyone at Sioux Falls School District, this is not an easy issue, obviously? So, we really appreciate all the information and your time to help us wade through all this. We had Sioux Empire Leadership Council. It was just right after the announcement of the Holmesley gift for the Triage Center, which was the first project to Sioux Empire Leadership Council spearheaded. We're now moving on to diversity and engagement. They're starting a committee, applications, I, I think today was the end when they were reviewing kind of the application format? And those are going out to start a committee on that? That, that will work with the exec council at Sioux Empire Leadership? The, which will also be working hand in hand to go on to my other board meeting was Chamber, which Dr. Staven and I attended? Out at the Sanford, it's the house, I was going to say barn, but it was the house? And very interesting presentation by Dr. Mark Brown from the USD Discovery District? Who is just doing fabulous work out there. I think there's lots of opportunities for partnership with them with the district. And they announced, the Chamber announced a new pathways committee that's going to work on diversity and education in the workplace. Kira Kimball is kind of spearheading that and they announced that committee. They also announced their new officer slate, which will be Dan Doyle Chair, Alex Ramirez Chair-elect, Paul Hanson Vice Chair and Scott Vaughn's Treasurer. They have several events coming up. Their biggest will be their annual meeting, which will be different. I think they'd only do seven hundred seats compared to what they've done in the past? But also offering virtual opportunities, like businesses who work together already, maybe get together at their business and watch it and have the event that way. Let's see, they also talked about another constitutional amendment, which is the sports wagering in Deadwood one. And the important thing to know about that is like under the tribal gaming compacts into the state? If we in Deadwood do that, then all the Native American casinos would be allowed to do that too? So, that runs hand in hand. Whatever we vote on for Deadwood to do gambling, all the tribal casinos also get that opportunity to do that based on the gaming comp. So, and then we had early childhood. There's a parent on that meeting and two others, Sue Parrot and Elizabeth? And we just really kind of introduced ourselves, it was my first meeting with them? And talked about beginning the school year and how to work with the teachers? And they were just really excited to be back with their kids, so. And Promise and Teachers Fund got all their book of month club sponsorships done? So, twenty-two hundred classrooms, fifty-five hundred support, nine, five hundred books? So, they're pretty excited to get that going. Thank you very much, any other reports or good information? Sure, not, I, I bet those masks are about this big. Have a motion for adjournment.
Oh, second?
I have a motion, second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those in say?
Your turn.
Thank you.